This conference will now be recorded.
In this cohort, the task force did meet quarterly. Next slide. With the closing of school in March of this year, we moved that quarterly meeting and it went to a weekly meeting with the high school administration, guidance staff, and child study team where we have addressed individual student failures and developed individual plans for each one of those seniors. We've addressed both academic progress this year as well as buyback hours for previous failures which they lost for loss of attendance. We then also established the procedure in a flow chart for response intervention, which is a complete program that will identify struggling students within the district and then provide academic remediation and support to those students in the future. We will not have final figures for the graduation rate until next August, although we will have some idea where we are in June when the graduation does take place. But the state figures aren't determined until after the August, which allows students in summer school to also be Canada's graduate. Are there any questions?
I have a question. Um, this is Sheila.
Huh?
Oh, I'm sorry. You were. This is Sheila Etienne now. I know that you spoke about buyback on the senior year.
Yes.
What efforts are made for buyback prior to the senior year?
We've really addressed almost all students now. With these weekly meetings, we've been really looking at nine through 12, but the focus has been on the seniors. But we are working with underclassmen at the same time.
And let me add as well, this is Edmond Ruiz, Director of Curriculum Instruction, that targeting not only our seniors for the summer, but all grade levels that need buyback. We want to catch our students up as soon as possible so they can just continue their education career on a regular track. Thank you, Brian.
I just had one.
Ms. Lysinski?
Yes, I just had a question and you answered something that I was going to ask during the CUSAC report. And I had asked a few months ago, a few minutes ago about whether we had approved all the new curriculum. Because I remember approving the writing of the curriculum, but I didn't remember approving all the new curriculum. And from what you said, we, the board has approved all new curriculum.
When I get to the CUSAC presentation, I'm happy to explain a little bit more in detail.
Okay, so this didn't cover that part then?
Okay. This is our district goals presentation and this is an update on the status of the four district goals that we've been using throughout the school year.
No, I understand he mentioned curriculum approval, so that's why I asked. I'll wait. Thank you.
It does, it dovetails.
Okay. No, I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, great.
Any other questions or Mr. Bradley? Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Our next presentation, our innovative practices.
Hi, this is Debbie Sylvia. I'm presenting on our district goal innovative practices, which involves STEAM planning and implementation. And the specific goal was that by the end of 2021, each school will have a full STEAM program incorporated into the curriculum of all disciplines to prepare every student for 21st century careers. So if you could just go back to the first slide of the presentation. Thank you. One more. Thank you. It was there. One more. It's the one with the chart, the quad chart. There you go. Thank you. If you look at the objectives, the first two objectives were achieved fairly quickly. We came into the school year by the end of, mid to end of October. We had already assessed and evaluated resources to determine the needs. And the way we did that was we formulated STEAM teams from each building. And then all of those STEAM teams met at the high school to do their assessment and talk about resources that we have and what we would need in order to make this goal achievable. After that, we worked on planning the curriculum. So those teams then met again in order to come up with topics for our theme. And our theme for this project is Water is Life. You might remember earlier in the year when we had a presentation at the board where one of the young students at the high school had created some artwork around that theme. So again, this, this goal is so that we can tie STEAM into every discipline. So that was just one example of that at the time. So the curriculum was planned and approved prior in the year by the board. And now we are on part three, which is implementing the STEAM curriculum in order to do a pilot program and assess where we are and what changes need to be made before the end of 2021, when we will have a full program running. So you'll see in the lower section of that quad chart, we have completed the pilot program in grades six to eight with very good feedback from all three of the teachers that ran those classes. And right before we went on break actually, or for our remote learning, we actually had started the pilot program in one of our kindergarten classes. And the kindergarten teacher, let's see, I have her name here. Melinda Wright Schwartz actually was the one teacher that started the Implement the Program. And she gave us very, very good feedback. We weren't sure how it would go over at the elementary level, but she did excellent job of giving us feedback so we know where to tier from there. If you look at our next steps, what we want to do is to continue the pilot program from kindergarten through fifth grade. As I said earlier, sixth grade through eighth grade is done. And then we will proceed with the high school. So of course, in the year of 2021, you know, we will still be finishing this up. And then we will be having professional development as well once the pilot program is completed and will be up and ready to run in 2021 school year. The next slide is just to give you an example of the work that the teams did. If you could go to the next slide, thank you. So you can see what happened was we wanted to be a lot of cross-articulation from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade. So basically, this is just showing you that each grade level will be having four units in the STEAM Water is Life theme. And it'll run from kindergarten in first grade where they'll be studying the ecosystem. Second grade is doing water cycle and clean water. Third grade is doing the water cycle and filtration. Fourth grade is doing the New Jersey weather and climate. Then they're going to move in fifth grade to the weather and climate for the country. In sixth grade, they're doing recycling and food production. Seventh grade is water composition, conservation, and pollution. Eighth grade is greenhouse and gardening and soil. Ninth grade is watersheds and also pollution protection, conservation. 10th grade, they're doing biochemistry. 11th grade, they're doing temperature of water and pH. And then in 12th grade, they're doing water transport. So again, that's why the teams in each building were able to meet in order to accomplish this so that we have a curriculum around this theme. Where K through 12, we're all working gradually on all these topics that support the theme Water is Life. Any questions? Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have one. I was looking at the chart. So by the end of 12th grade, students will have an understanding, what grade are you referring to that by the end of 12th, they will have the understanding? Which grade are we starting with?
We're starting, we're starting with kindergarten. Once we do all the pilot programs and we start implementing it, it would be kindergarten through first grade. So if we keep with this theme, once you move into second grade, you'll start another part of the theme. Once you move into third grade. So it'll be gradual, all the way up through 12th grade.
Is there, is there, I've seen some integration in the other grades, even the high school. And I'm assuming this is, you know, little things that are included in the present curriculum. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. Yes. Yes. What we're trying to do is, you know, previously, some schools had specific STEAM classes. Some schools didn't have STEAM teachers. And we don't want STEAM to be only something that happens in a STEAM lab with a STEAM teacher. We wanted to try and incorporate curriculum that would give every student an opportunity to have STEAM-related lessons, even in their classroom, in art class, in music class, in gym class, all the way across the curriculum. So we really targeted when those teams met, they really targeted those areas and being able to find lessons to support the theme that could be done in the classroom and in other domains.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our last goal presentation will be on collaborative culture.
This is Jeff Hastings and our team consisted of Dr. Kristi Howard Morris and our Bradley Elementary Principal, Mr. Perry Medina. What we found during the staff town hall was that there was some confusion about the various initiatives and goals set for the district moving forward. So one of the issues was if I was a special ed teacher, I may not know about things in other areas or vice versa. So the goal that was established by us was to provide an electronic medium that would work as a repository to provide staff access to information regarding all the district-wide initiatives. And our initial target was to have that completed by December of 2019, but it looks like that is going to be pushed to June of 2020. One of the things we looked at as a positive to this was that the information on the site was going to be available and help tether each of the buildings and their staffs to the district's vision and missions. The information that's provided on the site is vetted by the various directors and the various administrative staff that's overseeing those particular areas so that the information is appropriate for our staff. With the help of Mr. Medina and his technical skills, we were able to set up a webpage that would host this various information that has been established. The materials and resources in the repository are for staff only, so they're password protected. Staff already has credentials for Google, so we've just extended their Google credentials to the website so that they can go on to that website, sign in, and they access information on the various district goals. It was also pointed out by Mr. Medina as a building administrator and a building principal that he thought that was very important to have this available so that building leadership can design and execute their annual school plans and make sure they're in alignment with the district's goals and vision. As noted on our quad chart here, we've moved through three out of five phases to completion. So the district has identified each initiative. We've looked at content creators or folks to be in charge of the content that's displayed under the various areas. And as I noted, Mr. Medina has established the digital workspace, so it's up and running. Moving forward, we want to make sure we populate that with all the information that's needed. And then we have to assess the effectiveness of the site. And we're looking at using some Google Analytics to see how many times the page is accessed, you know, which information is accessed the most and be able to troubleshoot and make it a more user-friendly site as well. As you can see, the impact or concerns that we may have are basically just content-driven. Is the content there and is the content accurate and user-friendly for the staff? Again, we have moved through three of the five areas that we wanted to reach out to. And our next steps are to continue to move forward on contacting our content managers and making sure that they're providing up-to-date information. Also making sure that as that information changes, they're aware of it and giving us adjustments that we need to make to keep it current. And as I said, we will utilize Google analytical tools to make those evaluations. So again, the site is up and running and we hope to have it open to all staff members by the end of next month.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. Are there any questions?
I just have a quick question. It's Barbara Lysinski. I just wanted to know, is there any insight as to the two items that were not created, completed, the creative digital space and assessed effectiveness? What was the, what prevented you from completing that? Was it too aggressive of an idea to complete? Or was there certain things that prevented that?
So the reason we have creating our digital space is in progress addresses the content factor of the space, not the functionality of the space. So the site is up and it's running and we're able to upload the information into the site so that would be available. But we have that as an in-progress because we have some departments that still need to provide us with information. And yes, to your point, we were a little aggressive in looking at December as a completion date for that. But we wanted to set a high expectation to help drive us forward. And unfortunately, we're going to fall a little bit short, but we will have that thing in place in the next month.
Thank you. That's impressive.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hastings.
So I just want to commend the team. As, as we have moved forward in this work, I've made a very concerted effort to ensure that all members of the executive committee are actively engaged, not only just engaged in word, but in action. And that's why the different members from the executive committee presented tonight because they are the keepers, two executive committee members are the keepers, if you will, of ensuring that they watch over one of the four goals. And so I am very pleased with how they have been regularly working within their respective departments and with their teams. As you heard, Mr. Hastings, Dr. Howard worked very closely at the building level, specifically with one of the principals who has demonstrated very strong skillset around technology and technology integration. And so we look to find different members of our team that we can utilize and build our internal capacity and grow our own learning so that we're not always going out, but that we're effectively utilizing the resources in-house. And so this COVID-19 has created a problem, you hear me talk about that often. We know the problem is that we're in a global pandemic. The opportunity is that it's forced us to think about how we're going to function as a district. It forces us to do things differently. And one of those differences that Ivy Brown touched on when we talked about parental engagement is now that we are in this space and place, I have an opportunity to reach out to parents in a fresh, new, and different way. On Sunday evenings, I may have upwards of 50 callers on the phone during a Zoom conference to talk about the state of the district, to talk about whatever questions they want to talk to the superintendent on. That's not something that I would typically have in the brick and mortar space because it's not that our parents are not interested, which is clearly indicative of having 50 parents on a Sunday night, on a Sunday night call at 6:30 PM. So it's not that our parents are not interested or involved or want to be engaged. It's that there's oftentimes those obstacles that prevent them from being able to come into the building. So we continue to have very rich conversations. I'll be on the Good News Radio station with another one of our principals, Mr. Murtil, this Saturday, where I will have another opportunity to continue to engage with our parents and our community. And these are, again, opportunities that otherwise I would not be able to reach a large, a larger audience. Our buyback has also been enhanced and enriched during this remote learning experience because our students are really receiving very, very targeted, in-depth, personalized support through our staff and just not having some of what normally occurs during the school day happening. Our staff have been reaching out and providing a lot of one-on-one support. So the monitoring and the need of buyback hours is now not only the focus for our seniors. The curriculum continues to be written and updated, particularly within our CTE programs. And you'll see that on the agenda, that as we need to increase for a different year as our students and we go deeper in our CTE Academy programming, the curriculum writing is happening prior to its implementation. And you will note that is on the agenda and has been on the agenda. Lastly, when we talk about the innovative practices and we talk about the STEAM initiative, what is critically important and what we know across the country, if not the entire world, is that children of color, particularly black and brown and Hispanic children in poverty, tend to grow up in communities that are adversely impacted by environmental conditions. Poverty-stricken communities tend to have a lot of issues around garbage, around environmental hazards. And the impact that that has on our children's lives are far-reaching and lasting. And so a lot of thought went into Water is Life so that we wanted to make sure that we didn't go 10 miles wide and 1 centimeter deep. Because these are children that will inherit a world and a future where we need them to be critical thinkers. We need it, we need them to understand their environment, sustainability, the impact that their environment has on their lives and their futures. And we need to make sure that the curriculum is relevant. And we want to make sure that children in poverty that are of color have the same opportunities that all children have. And so I'm very pleased with the timeline that has been provided around this Water is Life initiative and that there is a sharp focus on it so that our students will continue every grade level to be engaged and being problem solvers. Really appreciate the partnerships we have in our community with our wildlife, conserve wildlife, with the conservatory. We are a shore community and our children need to understand the impact that the water that's right in their backyard has in their role in making sure that they are keepers of creating a cleaner space and place. So that's the summation of the district four goals and how and why those are our focus for now. We did create lofty goals. The goal was not to ensure that everything is completed at the end of the year. The goal is to challenge ourselves to make sure that we're putting forth a quality product and that we're constantly encouraging us to push ourselves and our students and our staff in a way that's going to have lasting, a lasting impact. So that being said, I'm going to transition now to talk about our CUSAC rating, our CUSAC scores. So I am, there have, there are five areas in CUSAC. CUSAC is our state monitoring tool. Last year, we were monitored. This, during the course of this year, we received monitoring from the legislative level. And then we also received monitoring through the state. So what you are observing here is the 10-year history of the NJCUSAC, which is our state monitoring tool. Excuse me. There have been two areas historically that have been underperforming in our district when you look over a 10-year period. And those two areas happen to be instruction and programs and governance. I'm very pleased to say that we have experienced growth in those areas in a very significant way. During my tenure here as Director of Curriculum Instruction and now Superintendent of Schools, I've observed an increase in our instruction and programs. Specifically during my time as a superintendent, we have noted a 38%, approximately a 38% increase in our instruction and programs. It should be noted that instruction and programs rating relies very heavily on standardized test scores. Because our students have historically underperformed in and on standardized assessments, that tends to be an area where we do not receive the maximum amount of points. Fortunately, there is an understanding that proficiency now, and this is a national conversation, it hasn't just emerged this year, but there is, has been a national conversation around proficiency versus growth. As a result, the State Department of Education has looked at the CUSAC monitoring tool and made accommodations because districts across the state have been talking about the equity issues around proficiency versus growth. And even for your highest-performing students, this notion of just using proficiency doesn't accurately tell the story. So we want to see a story of growth. CUSAC shows in the IMP now, the transition includes a growth measure. During this COVID-19, our standardized testing has been relaxed. And so there will be implications and we'll get guidance from the governor as time progresses where and how that will impact our monitoring tool. However, our scores have come back from the Department of Education. And so for our instruction and programs, we are now at 72%. When I arrived in this district, we were at 27%. So I'm very pleased to share that degree of growth and expect that as we continue to perform on our standardized assessment, if that continues to be a part of the indicator, I can, I anticipate that we will only excel in that, in that area. Fiscal management, 92% is our current score. And we tend to, we're tending to trend in this over 90% range. And so that's also not historically been an area of significant focus. So I'm pleased that we are maintaining in that regard. Governance was another area that has been historically challenging. And I'm very pleased to say that over the past four years, we are experiencing growth there. In 2017, our rating was 59%. And I'm pleased that we are now at 95%. Operations, in 2017, we were at 95%. We are now at 100%. So there's a lot to be gleaned there, very positive in terms of the growth. Personnel, we are at 65%. So we'll be, I will be sharing some corrective action measures to ensure that we experience growth all across the board. That completes my CUSAC report in terms of the 10-year history. And then I have broken out on individual slides by indicator. This is the instruction and programs. And so just as a visual, you can see from over this 10-year period, you can see how we continue to grow and trend upward. Same thing with fiscal management. The bars are trending in the same very, in the same area. Governance, again, we had the decline and then the increase from 2017 at 59% and now we're at 95%. Operations, 58% to 100, obviously 100 being the highest. And then in personnel, we will be working toward that effort. That completes the CUSAC report. Are there any questions?
I just had a comment.
Yes.
I want to commend the administration and everyone who had something to do with increasing the curriculum, you know, updating and making sure that curriculum was updated. It was contention of mine a number of years ago and I'm pleased to see that. That was Barbara Lysinski that was commenting.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
This is Dominic Ladaraque. I also want to commend everyone for the, for the growth. Just, just wondering, are there examples of some of the factors in personnel that, that have adversely affected us over the years? And haven't we addressed some of those with the, the most recent technology for signing in and attendance and that sort of thing?
Yes, we have addressed it in, in some of those ways, but I will have a more comprehensive corrective action plan that I will be sharing with the Board in the next meeting, at the next Board meeting.
Okay, thanks.
This is Carol Jones. I was wondering if there was anything else that we could look at as far as the personnel situation, as what state is looking at? Is it numbers? Is it contentment? I don't, I'm not really aware of what they're looking at as far as personnel is concerned.
So, I will share the indicators that are used in the CUSAC rating. And then, as a part of talking about a corrective action plan, we will have that conversation at the next Board meeting. Tonight, I wanted to just minimally share with you the letter and the scores because we just recently received them. Any other Board members with a question or comment?
Just one thing, you said there was a letter. Could you forward the letter? I didn't, I didn't see a letter. I guess there is a report from the state that referenced that.
Yes, the letter comes to me and it gives me the scores that I just reported out.
Thank you. Yeah, I have the one from last year sitting next to me and I was comparing it and there was a significant improvement. Thank you.
Absolutely, no problem.
So, I just want to thank everyone for outstanding job. Commend all those involved in our ratings. So, thank you for that special job.
Thank you. I have a dynamic team and I was, I'm just delighted that they had an opportunity to present and share and provide context. Their teams also are extremely responsible for what they were able to present on.
Okay. So, Madam Superintendent, that concludes your report?
No, I just have a couple, the presentation. You want me to slide into the report?
Yes.
Very briefly, we continue to provide food security through the two distribution sites, the middle school and the Thurgood Marshall Elementary School. We've added a third site, Bradley Elementary. I'm very pleased that Assistant Business Administrator Ivy Brown, she oversees our food program. And we have to date served over 16,000 meals. And we continue to see a need. Tomorrow, we are going to have a wonderful offering through Fulfill Food Country, where we'll be able to offer a more robust selection of food. And we are going to continue to partner so that we're able to find food opportunities for our families during the time when we are out of school before we start for the summer program, which now I want to transition to our virtual summer school. We will be offering a virtual summer school and that will begin July 6th. And it will run for six weeks, Monday through Friday, which is a little bit of a different offering. We want to be able to do that so that we can try to address the COVID slide with those students that have, that will be attending. I'm very pleased that Shanta Jackson has been extremely instrumental in ensuring that we have a online registration. As our registration's done a phenomenal job in working with different members of the team, Mr. Bramley, Mr. Ruiz, to ensure that our families could register. On the first day of our sign-up for virtual online registration for summer school, we had 60 students enroll. To date, we have over 100 students that have already enrolled for our virtual summer, virtual summer school, which is extremely delightful and impressive because we know that this means that our students will be in the home. But there's a lot of excitement around our ability to pivot from the packets, the remote learning now, to a virtual learning space. So, we're excited that our students will have an opportunity to see their teachers, to see their classmates in a synchronous learning format. So, at the same time, they'll be able to, on their computer, thanks to the purchase and support of the Board of getting the tablets for our students that are LTE-enabled, they'll be able to now have class with their teacher. So, we're just asking that the parents create a quiet space for our children so that they can, and then we take over from there. So, that's extremely exciting.
Have the tablets been fully distributed?
We are continuing to distribute tablets. In some cases, we are even going to homes with our tenants officers to deliver tablets and provide support in that way. But there's a whole signing in, signing out process. Our staff members have been extremely instrumental in ensuring that they are providing video support. Sonia Irizarry, Amit Etienne, and Kayleen Vido have been working very closely with our English learning population to ensure if language is a barrier, that they have video instruction and tutorials so that they can help our, our parents navigate and support the children at home, getting them on, and then we take over from there. So, I'm, I'm very excited about that. Lastly, I wanted to share how super proud we are to have 16 of our Dream Academy High School students complete before high school graduation. They graduated on May 14th, although it was virtual. They graduated on May 14th from Brookdale Community College with an associate's degree. So, yes, thank you, Ms. Wazinski. That deserves a wonderful applause. This was the collective effort of an entire school district that shepherded over these children. It started as a vision with, between myself and the former Superintendent, now our Commissioner of Education, who really spearheaded this initiative. And I'm so delighted that I got to continue to see it to fruition along with this dynamic staff in the Asbury Park Schools and our beloved community who has supported our students on the, on the east side. I know the Stone Pony has been wonderfully supportive of acknowledging our children. And for that, we are very thankful to know that we have that type of community support. We had some challenges. This year, we had to not only deal with the global pandemic, which is enough of a challenge, but having to balance a budget under the most challenging financial times in the history of the Asbury Park School District was not an easy task, but it was one that was met. And I'm proud that I was able to lead that initiative and have the support of the Board in doing that. So, I want to just say thank you very much for your continued support and making sure that we put our children first and that the needs of our children are always what drives what we are doing in our district. That completes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. I'm also very excited. These are exciting times in the midst of the pandemic. The time for the virtual summer school is Monday through Friday. So, what time?
It will be 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. because we kind of know what happens in this space and place, and there's really no need to have the kids get up there. Right, so.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Madam Superintendent?
I have a question, Ms. Smith. Um, I actually have a question. Ms. Bree could not be here tonight and she wanted me to ask about graduation plans because we hadn't heard anything about it. And is there any graduation plans? And could you just give an overview of what's going to happen?
Yes, we do. We have graduation plans. Our Governor has recently given us guidance. However, prior to receiving the guidance from our Governor, delighted that the Director of Student Services slash our Acting Principal of Asbury Park High School and her team were very diligent in ensuring that we had a Plan A and a Plan B. The Plan A was a virtual graduation as we were awaiting guidance. And then, in anticipation, should things change and the economy open up after we heard about the beaches and the parks, a Plan B was created. And so, the Plan B is a face-to-face graduation. We understand that there are limitations in terms of the numbers currently that the Governor has placed those restrictions and they apply to in-face graduations, in-person graduations. So, the date that we have tentatively scheduled for the in-person graduation will be July 10th at 5:00 p.m. Understanding that we're using the term tentatively because as we seek and get additional guidance from the Governor in terms of the numbers, then we may have to adjust the time. At, currently, it is our understanding that there are 25 people allowed in a, in a gathering that would be inclusive of the graduates, which means that we would have to have several small group in-person graduations. Dr. Howard has done a fantastic job with her team of, as I shared, creating a hybrid approach so that we may be able to accommodate these smaller group graduations and give our students the opportunity to walk across the stage and have that moment.
Madam President, Monica, you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to say in the Governor's guidelines that were released just today, they are talking about the fact that the number will be adjusted up by, in July, for July, and they assume that it will be higher than 25. So, there could be an adjustment there.
I'm not sure if you were able to hear. The state monitor was sharing the additional guidance that the Governor will be addressing the number, the capacity, as, as we move into July. And so, there's, we are anticipating that we may hear of a larger number of students or participants, if you will, being able to congregate at one time. Regardless, I want you to be assured that the team has created a contingency plan so that we can honor our students and have an in-person face-to-face graduation that's in compliance with the ordinance from our Governor.
Excuse me, I have a question. Did we look into doing it outdoors?
It has to be outdoors. The graduation will be outside in the stadium.
And there's still that number of limitations?
That's the Governor's guidance. The graduation must be outdoors. And currently, the, the number is at 25.
Wow. Because we have a big outdoors, I would think that they would increase the number that we could have.
At this time, there has not been an increased number communicated to us. So, we will follow all of the guidelines, social distancing, a mask, and keep the number at 25. So, there will be a reduced number of people invited to the graduation so that we can ensure our students, because our focus is on our students, as much as we want to make sure our families get to celebrate with them, we want the students to have that moment. And so, our efforts will be concerted on ensuring students have access to that, to that ceremony.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent.
That completes my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. And now, public participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167. Mr. Hastings?
Thank you, Madam President. Looks like we have two comments that have been sent to us. The first is from Tari Burardesco. Hello, my name is Tari. I have four children that attend Barack Obama School. I just have a couple of questions for today's meeting. Why are these packets? One second. Why are these packets that you are providing the students to do all projects? How are these projects teaching these students? Why is it that you feel that my husband and I have time to do four projects for four children after both of us are working full-time jobs? I don't have time to assist my children on doing projects and I have done the last two packets because frankly, I do have the time. Why should my kids be penalized for some random paperwork slapped together by someone? They aren't learning anything from these projects. It's frankly a waste of time. Why are you subjecting the teachers to take these projects to their homes to grade? How is that keeping the teachers safe? They do not know what environment these so-called projects have been in, whether or not these materials are infectious as the CDC stated that COVID-19 travels on surfaces. Two, how are you planning on doing social distancing for the buses and classrooms next year for school? Have you obtained additional buses where there'll be aides on this bus to ensure of social distancing? Now that Barack will be closing, three elementary enrollments will now be held within two schools. How do you plan on ensuring the safety of our children while at school? I would appreciate my concerns to be addressed during this meeting because my emails to the Superintendent have been ignored or not responded to yet. Thank you.
So, your questions regarding the continuous instruction, the Governor mandated for school districts when we went into our health-related school closure, that we needed to provide two things, continuous instruction and food security for our food insecure families. The packets are just that. Our ability to provide continuous instruction tied to activities that our students have, have been engaged in. One of the things that we understand and know is that with a remote packet, however, the one critical piece that is missing is the classroom teacher. Our classroom teachers have been working diligently to ensure that they're reaching our students. But the challenge is when we don't have that virtual setup, it becomes a little more complex, layered, and nuanced. Additionally, we have adopted a do-no-harm grading procedure. And so, our do-no-harm grading procedure is designed in such a way that we are able to be responsive to our families during a global pandemic when that direct instruction may not be occurring for some of this, for some of the reasons that you stated. We know that we have parents that may be also working from home and also trying to educate their child at the same time. There's no replacement for a certified classroom teacher. And we understand that there's no replacement for a certified classroom teacher. So, the activities that we've sent home are designed to keep students keenly aware, keep them freshened up on the skills and, but also inform us in terms of the areas that we may need to address when our students return to us. And so, I'm going to allow our Director of Curriculum and Instruction to add a little more context to the more granular details around those packets.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. This is Edwin Ruiz, Director of Curriculum and Instruction. One of the, the foci in, in putting these packets together originally and initially was based around the concept of home, home instruction. And there's a certain hour requirement that, that is, that was delineated by the state about what we need to, what kind of subjects we need to cover and the amount of time for our students. Initially, our first packets went out, we did them centrally. And then, as time went on, we then, our teachers at the grade levels, as a grade level, started to develop the packets from a grade level perspective so that we can lend a little more context in the sense of what the students need to be working on in their grade levels by their teachers. So, the packets are, are put together in that way. We also transitioned from doing more ditto's and paper to projects, as you noticed, as you stated in your comment, because we wanted to have students have a, a, a more expanded educational experience when they took them home. We certainly understand the concern of parents having to take on this extra responsibility and this extra burden. And that's why we worked so hard to try to get devices out as soon as possible to all of our families. And we're in the process of doing that right now for that very reason. Because we want to make sure that our students have the ability to have a synchronous instruction with their teachers as opposed to having to work from a packet and, and burdening our families. As far as the sanitation of the, the packets, I just want you to know that we took very, we took a lot of precautions when the packets came back. The way that we hand out the packets, The way that we hand out the packets is in compliance with social distancing as well as trying to keep everyone safe. We place, they're placed in a bag, we have parents put them in the proper baskets, then we sanitize them. We use an electrostatic cleaner to sanitize them, then we bag them, and we keep them for about a week before we even separate them and then have teachers come. They're in a very organized manner to come pick up the packets so that we're not all on top of each other. So there's a lot that goes into that, a lot of thought, a lot of planning went into that. We want to keep everyone safe. We certainly don't want to send anything home that is not. So that's something that we, we take a lot of pride in making sure that we keep everyone safe. I think Ms. Gray covered a lot about the grading procedures, and I think that's adequate. And we continue to evolve. And I think that what you're going to see in our summer program is that evolution, that transition from packets to actual direct instruction, which is what we've wanted from the very beginning. And thanks to the board and everything that's happened so far, we're in that process. By the end of next week, the majority of our students will have and will be online and connected, and that's very, very exciting for us. Thank you.
I think additionally, the parents have to understand that every day there's new guidance given by the state. So it's pretty hard for you guys to plan out what next year looks like when you don't know what guidance is going to be given out. So I know that they're concerned about social distancing and how it's going to be dealt with at the elementary levels. However, by August, we don't know what the government is going to say.
Right.
So they have to understand that just like the curriculum instruction is evolving, the way that we're going to be dealing with COVID and children, and the staff is going to be evolving too as more guidance and more research is given.
Thank you, Madam Etienne. We also understand from the CDC, we've actually observed updates from CDC guidelines in terms of surfaces, how long, if things are even transmitted through contact, through paper. That information is also evolving regularly. But I will say, I would like to specifically shout out our custodial engineers because they are doing a phenomenal job with the old guidance, the new guidance, with all the guidance. They are still very on top of ensuring that they are sanitizing. There's a three-step sanitation procedure that's in place before staff members ever receive any of those papers, and they allow them to sit out because we also know that when the documents are sitting out in a contained area, the virus wouldn't live on there based on the guidelines we've received. So thank you so much for your question, ma'am.
Our next email is from Tajah Naya Kamara and Leah Holloway. Just want to shine a big light and congratulate the 16 kids that just got their associate's degree, college degree from Brookdale. And we have an email from Mr. Danny Williams. Hello, my name is Danny. Great meeting. This is my third board meeting ever been to in my 28 years living in Asbury Park. I had to chime in tonight to say, to just say that the dream program was and is a great success. Hats off to Asbury Park. Congrats to all the 16 students, and I'm very excited to look forward to the future of Asbury Park School Districts.
Do we have any idea of how many of the 16 are going to continue to get their bachelor's degree or anything like that?
Yes, Debbie, the question is how many of the 16 are going on to get their bachelor's degree? And just again, I want to just reiterate, our, those 16 students have received an associate's degree before high school to Paloma. So we are so delighted.
Well, I'm happy to report that 15 of the 16 of them have plans to go to a four-year school or to continue at Brookdale with the articulation agreements with Rowan and with Rutgers University. There is one student that we're still working with that is kind of undecided, and we continue to work with him to find a home for him, but so far we have 15 out of 16 solid.
And there is no additional public comment.
Okay. Time now. Thank you, Mr. Hastings. That ends public.
Madam President, if I could just note for the minutes that it's now 8:08 p.m. and there are no more public comments.
Yes, thank you. No more public comments at 8:08. Thank you. Okay, Madam Superintendent, would you like to ask for consent agenda? Oh, I have something. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. State monitors.
Oh, that's right.
Could I, we have a motion for A2, Number 10A and B, and could I note that on Item B, our minutes from May 7th, that Ms. Etienne arrived on time and was not late for that meeting. That adjustment will be made in the minutes. So I need a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll move it. Barbara Lisinski.
This is Jeff, second.
Any question? Okay, Mr. Hastings.
Thank you. Ms. Lisinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Bree? Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Madam Superintendent, would you like to ask for consent agenda?
Yes, I'm requesting consent agenda for Items B1 to B4.
We need a motion for that in a second.
Move.
Ms. Etienne?
Second by Pinkney.
Second.
Second by Pinkney.
Thank you.
Question? No questions? All right.
Of course, I have questions.
Please answer your question, Ms. Lisinski.
Yes, I just wanted to have a question on B11. Can we expect more or is this the end of reappointments? Just a question.
There will be additional staff that will be appointed on the June meeting, at the June meeting.
Okay, number six, I was, the athletic committee did have a conversation about coaching appointments, and I was wondering, instead of rescinding the coaching appointments because they are in fall, if maybe it might be better to amend a contingent upon the NJ SIAA determinations involving COVID instead of actually rescinding them because we'd have to go through the process again if all of a sudden we could have fall sports.
And now, state monitor, would you like to answer that question?
We, I originally instructed them to call up, and we are not going to appoint any until we find out what the restrictions from the governor's office will be, or from the state athletic association. But we do not want to be obligated legally for a contract that would put us in a position that we would have to pay a salary with the sport not going forward. And this spring, the decision, a legal decision in the state was that because those contracts had been released, we had to pay for them even though sport was not deducted. So we are not moving with any sports, any addendum C items at all until the state determines what the program is going to be. It obligates the district, and we don't want to be obligated financially.
May I follow up and say, are you still doing interviews for maybe like football or something, just in case all of a sudden we'd have to do a special meeting for appointments?
Yes, we, I, this is with Roberta and the HR department, they are at their positions. They will interview, and they will be ready to appoint immediately once we get guidance from the state.
Okay, that's what I was concerned about. I have another question, reference the policies. I know that Mr. Hastings, the Number 7H, I know we were forwarding that to the attorney. Is this policy as we had reviewed it prior to any changes that may be made by the attorney?
Yes, that's correct.
I think I have, oh, the other question I had was on Number 14B3, and I know that in the April 29 meeting, we approved some transfers from Title 14 for these monies for the T-Mobile hotspots. I was wondering if we could just have an overview, just like, kind of like the ideas the administration has on what the CARES Act submission is going to cover, you know, what other kind of things that I think you're going to cover when you do your application for the additional funds.
So the plan for how those funds will be allocated are going to be driven by the guidance that we are awaiting, and that continues to change. We have ideas, but as the guidance changes, then we have to pivot from whatever that guidance is to changing our plan. We have a Plan A, a Plan B, and a Plan C that we've been working on as we receive more guidance from the governor, and the governor was pretty adamant in his update today that as much as he knows we want a date, he doesn't want to have to go back and change the date. And so as a result, we are being extremely thoughtful and mindful about how the guidelines and the guidance has already changed and what that potentially looks like in our schools. We're working with and in collaboration with a consultant to help us in terms of understanding what some of those options look like.
Ms. Lisinski, I'll get back to you. Just want to give other board members an opportunity. Are there any other board members that have a question?
Yes, I do.
Mrs. Jones?
Mrs. Gray, have you thought about the high school with the new students coming in, looking at the makeup of the nurses' office in the high school being totally inadequate to handle the age groups? And then again, to be totally inadequate relevant to any child who we thought might be exposed to the virus? I mean, there's no separation there. There's, it's really a very poor setup for bringing in all the extra grades into the building, and we have to look at the transporting of the kids from the classroom to the nurses' office because they shouldn't be in the hallway wandering around on their own. So maybe we should get together and talk about this.
Yeah, the issue of nurses' offices are not limited as a concern to the Asbury Park School District. This continues to be a conversation across states in terms of sick students. If students arrive ill, what are some of the conditions and requirements that are going to be put in place? That continues to evolve. We are having a lot of conversations around that, but again, those are all things that we are looking to receive guidance on, and we will definitely, I'll definitely look to you, and we can have some conversations, as I know your previous background is in nursing. But we will be guided by the guidance that we do receive in terms of what that looks like in separation and all of those things. Those are all issues for every school, regardless of the additional grades in a building. Those are the same concerns that we would have anyway.
My major concern at this time is having an adequate area that if one of the younger kids has to rest, that they're not resting on a cot that's next to an 18-year-old boy or a girl. I think that's something we need to look into.
Absolutely, and that is something that we would be mindful of, whether we had additional grades in there or not, just because it would be inappropriate otherwise. But definitely we'll have more conversations as we receive additional CDC guidance.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other board member? I'll get back to you, Ms. Lisinski. Any other board member with a question? Ms. Lisinski?
I just wanted to follow up about the CARES Act submission. It makes it difficult to submit an application with all the changes, and I was wondering when this submission was supposed to be due, if they keep changing their criteria.
So the CARES Act money, plan, and the application is due the middle of June. So I believe it's June 16th, if I'm not mistaken. So we want to have at least the board resolution approving us to apply for the funds. We can submit the plan, and then as we do each year, as the needs change, as we go through the year and identify different ways or better ways that we may want to utilize the funds, we submit the application and plan modifications. But the first thing we want to do is get all the paperwork in on time and not be penalized for not submitting things in a timely manner.
So, thank you, Jeff. It's a multi-year plan? I wasn't clear on that.
No, right now, it's a plan year, one-year plan, and we'll wait for more information as we've all seen, things are changing, you know, day to day, week to week on the funding and all the other variables, the guidance from CDC and those sorts of things, so.
Are there any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Hastings.
So this is all Items B1 through B4. Ms. Etienne?
Yes, I'm standing on B1.
Thank you. Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Ms. Lisinski?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion's carrying.
Mr. Hastings, would you like to ask for consent agenda?
Yes, Madam President. Could I have a motion in a second for all Items C1, Number 1 to C3, Number 9?
Move.
Second.
Question? Roll call, Mr. Hastings, please.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Lisinski?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. LaRocca?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney?
Yes.
Ms. Abes Anderson?
Yes.
Motion's carrying.
Need a motion to adjourn? Move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right. Adam, it was good seeing you. Thank you, everyone, Executive Board. Have a wonderful evening.
Have a great weekend.
Bye, everybody. Bye.
Good night.
They will, everyone.